Okay, everybody. Good evening, Democrats.
Good evening, Democrats.
Okay, thank you, Janet. Let's try it again. Everybody on Zoom, let's unmute. Everybody in the, in the room, let's quiet down for a second so we can do this and try it again. Good evening, Democrats.
Good evening, Democrats.
All right, welcome, everybody in here out there. We've got a great meeting tonight. This is our bi-annual in debate meeting for the rent control board, the college board, and the school board. Thank you, everybody, for being here and uh, we can have some quiet in the room, please. So just wanted to make sure everyone knows the, the schedule of events. Next Thursday, June 6th, we're going to have our city council debate. Right now, as we speak, the city council candidates are finishing up the first debate of the election season with Streets For All, the mobility organization. And early reports were good. It was a lively and spirited debate. Of course, we'll have a much better one next week. Uh, then Wednesday, June 26th, on Zoom only. And that's so that everyone has an even playing field, no advantages of being in person or being online. We're going to have our endorsement vote June 26th. So everybody, make sure that you're a member and that you're renewed. If you were not a member in 2023 or 2024, it's too late to join. If you were a member in 2023, you can renew all the way up to the day of the vote. You can talk to Mike Soloff if you want to do it tonight. You can email membership at SM Democrats or membership at Santa Monica Democrats, it all works. Membership at Santa Monica Democrats dot com. New email address for membership goes right to Mike. Do it up. Our process so far, for those who haven't seen our emails, we have already published our written questionnaires. Every candidate running for rent control board, school board, college board, and city council have submitted our really long questionnaires. This Zoom is having me have it with a permanent thumbs up. Is everyone seeing this? Okay, all right, we're done. Okay, yeah. Uh, the questionnaires are in, you can read everyone's responses. Uh, their contact information is mostly on the form, so if you have a special question for the candidates, you can reach out to them directly. We also spent this past weekend, Memorial Day weekend, everyone else was having fun in the sun. The Santa Monica Democratic Club Board was on Zoom meeting with all the candidates for a half an hour each, asking them more questions. Now, tonight and next Thursday, we'll have our in-person debates. We'll have the opportunity to see them face-to-face. And um, it's gonna be a great time. Now, you may notice when you look at the list of candidates, there's a few candidates that we know are probably running who are not listed. Specifically, some of the incumbents for city council. And I just wanted to make sure to clarify this for everybody, so there's no confusion, that every candidate who is an incumbent or who told us they were gonna run, or we heard a rumor that they were gonna run, we proactively reached out to all of those candidates, and some of them responded and said, actually, I know people have been throwing my name around, but I'm not really running. Some of them said that they were going to seek our endorsement, and then at the last minute, they chose not to. The incumbent city council candidates never reached back at all. So you can draw your own conclusions, but we are looking at an election where we're going to have the incumbents who are not even interested in seeking the democratic endorsement for this, for Santa Monica. And that's why these, these debates are so important. Last week, the vice mayor of our city went on to the Epoch Times, which is a far-right QAnon website. And she specifically called out the Santa Monica Democratic Club and as well as some of our partner organizations like Santa Monica Institute for Renters' Rights, Unite Here, Local 11, and other organizations, and claimed that those organizations were rigging our endorsement process and that it was somehow undemocratic that an organization of several hundred members was having a vote to endorse our candidates, that that somehow that's not representative of the whole community. So we have a lot that we have at stake in this election cycle. And we want to be as welcoming as possible to all the candidates. We're really grateful for the candidates who are participating. We're gonna have a really good night tonight. And uh, I see my, the thumbs up is back. I hadn't even raised my thumb, I'm just okay, whatever. Uh, all right, so we're, we have a lot to get to tonight. We're gonna start out with an important vote of the membership. And that has nothing to do with the local, it has to do with the national election. We know that Joe Biden is a couple points behind Trump in most of the key states. We know that if we're going to have success, we have to flip the House and hold the Senate. And in order to do that, we need to revive our partner organization, the West Side Democratic Headquarters. Now, the West Side Democratic Headquarters has been operational all this time. We've been calling, texting, postcarding, doing all of the work that we typically do every election cycle. But with the last two election cycles with some of, with COVID and some of the other concerns, we haven't had a physical, in-person uh, brick-and-mortar location to do that work from, like we did in 2018, which was when we flipped the House the last time. So this cycle, we're partnering up with our other Democratic Clubs on the West Side. West LA Democratic Club, Pacific Palisades Democratic Club, Stonewall Democratic Club. I see Sean's here from Stonewall. And uh, we are going to be uh, working with our partner clubs to be able to have a physical space, and that's planning to be here in Santa Monica. So we want everyone, not only to be able to do the work locally that we all know we have to do, but also to stop in at the West Side Democratic Headquarters and knock on some, you know, knock on some doors in the swing districts. We're gonna be able to send vans and buses like we have in past cycles. George Whitesides up in, up in Santa Clarita Valley, Dave Min and uh, Joe Kerr and a lot of the other districts in our region that are within a couple hours drive. We can go knock on some doors and come back all in the same day. We can also obviously do a lot of calling from the headquarters itself. That's why we want a physical space. Here's the ask. The West Side Democratic Headquarters has requested that all of the key uh, Dem Clubs who are sponsoring this kick in $5,000 for the uh, brick-and-mortar space. So the other clubs have committed to doing it, and the Santa Monica Democratic Club being the club that where the headquarters is gonna be and being one of the key organizations that's always been behind this, we want to, our board voted to recommend that the membership vote to support the $5,000 contribution to the West Side Democratic Headquarters. So we need a vote of the membership according to our bylaws. The board can't just spend all the money in the, in the bank without permission. Luis, our treasurer, would not be happy if, if we could do that. So we wanna get a vote of the membership. So we wanna know if there's a motion to approve this expense. And Susan uh, has her hand up. Okay, Susan makes the motion, Maria seconds, Maria Vasquez seconds. Okay, so uh, let's go to the vote. Unless there's any burning questions, all in favor? Okay, we got 24 yes votes. Okay, all opposed? No opposition? Oh, Robin?
No, I think that that's still a hands-up from before. And Judy, your, your hands are coming down.
Those are up, we know, we know they're supportive. Okay, any abstentions? Okay, thanks, everybody. We're going to do a lot of great work this year to, to flip the House. Yeah, yes, great. Well, Craig Ali has a question. Sure.
In that the group is coalescing, and based on what you said here, it is clear that this other party has gone on record saying they, they may not accept the results of that. And I'm wondering, since, you know, there is this coalescing of issues, is there an effort to more or less look at a contingency? Because as we see, I mean, poll workers have been intimidated.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm, I, 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 I heard that at least one Congresswoman wants to address contingency, you know, within polls outlets, but I'm wondering just how Democrats around the state are addressing this problem, if, if they are at all.
Uh, let me repeat the question for those on Zoom. So Craig asked if there's a contingency plan because a lot of the Republicans are talking about not accepting the results of the election. And I mean, I think that uh, people that are involved at the DNC and the higher-level election lawyers, we had Mark Elias as a guest at this club a few years ago, who, those are the folks who are probably working on that response. Uh, the West Side Democratic Headquarters, as powerful as we may be, probably doesn't have much role in that, although one thing we did do in 2018 was we went to the registrar's office after the election and witnessed uh, uh, we were, we were witnesses to the reek, to the counting and counting of the contingency ballots that came up, you know, provisional ballots, they're in the pink envelopes, and it was like someone didn't sign the right way. And we were making sure that those were all counted correctly. So I mean, I, I, I think that we have a role to play in that case. In the really close elections, I was going down to the registrar's office for Gil Cisneros back in 2018. Now Gil's running again in a different district this time and uh, uh, but, but, but that's the, that's the type of role that we play in that sense is down in the, you know, recounting and, and checking it out, but I guarantee you that the Democratic Party in general has plans for that kind of problem. But uh, they haven't looped me in. Uh, yeah, Jerry?
Uh, yeah, I was wondering if you know yet the location of Santa Monica or the West Side office might be, and also uh, do you think it would be a good idea to send out all the members and add a fundraising thing to get that $5,000 or more?
Yeah, so Jerry's asking where it's gonna be and if we need to do any more fundraising. The answer to that is for the first one, we don't have an exact location picked out, but they're looking at vacancies on the promenade on Montana. Uh, those are two of the places where we've done it before in past election cycles, so uh, we're, we're looking into those options now. Uh, one of our, one of the West Side Headquarters Board members uh, from Pacific Palisades Club, Gary Bettman is, that's his area of expertise is finding the location. So they're working on that now. Then as far as fundraising, uh, it is a bid, uh, uh, we haven't quite made the announcement yet, but there will be another Sammy Awards coming up between now and the election, and that's the Santa Monica Democratic Club's big fundraiser that we do. I don't wanna say annually, because it's only happened twice and COVID got in the way, but we, we do it every now and then, you know, and uh, that, that will be coming up and that will be, you know, a big focus of, of our fundraising this year is gonna be being able to pay for the West Side Democratic Headquarters and paying for these vans, you know, one van could be $250 to, when you take into account gas and the rental cost and other things like bringing snacks for people and stuff, so that's definitely something that, that we're gonna be doing. Stay tuned to find out more about it. We're, we're reaching out to our potential honorees at this point. Uh, Susan, yeah?
He says, "Really, that's great, especially fully, but I don't know if people are paying attention to both Democracy Docket and Mark Elias and also DNC Chair Jamie Harrison. Um, there's been some chicanery, I wonder if it worked. Um, but Ohio is tied, tied off the ballot. So, you know, all of our best brains are working on this, and Karen Harrison and Mark Elias and others have arranged to, I'm a vice delegate, and what we've arranged to do is
We says she know we can't hear a thing.
Yeah, I'm waiting, just, I wanna let her finish her remark. Sorry.
So we're kind of up to there, we're, we're all over this stuff. I don't, I don't have any more information than that, but
So Susan, so Susan Chu just referred to Craig's question about what the party's doing. She talked about Democracy Docket, which is Mark Elias's site. She talked about some uh, work that Chair Jamie Harrison of the DNC is working on. And she also mentioned that the party uh, is doing an online vote to confirm Biden's nomination in advance of some chicanery going on in Ohio where it basically Biden wouldn't have been able to be on the, on the ballot in Ohio, but now they're taking care of it. Okay, uh, we'll, we'll move on to the next item before we start the debate, and that is, we have one bill from the Legislative Committee uh, to pass tonight, so we welcome Isabel Story. And the podium's a little lower tonight, so hopefully.
Appreciate that. Hi, everybody. Um, so, yeah, we just have one bill for you tonight, uh, and this has to do with food safety in the schools. Uh, the bill was referred over to us from our Assembly Member to the North, Jesse Gabriel, who wrote this bill, and he asked for our support on it. And basically, it bans seven substances that have been linked to adverse health effects in children from food served in the schools. So uh, most of these are artificial dyes, like Red Dye 40, a few other dyes, and there's titanium oxide that is a white pigment used in candies and things like that. Really no reason, you know, why this should be in our kids' food, and a, a study from the California EPA came out three years ago, and it was linking these substances to hyperactivity in children and, what did it say, neurobehavioral problems. It said our current rules are based on studies that were 35 to 70 years old. They didn't look for these kind of things before, but the newer studies have shown this, so might as well get rid of these foods. Uh, or um, either have people reformulate them or, you know, just not serve those particular ones. So um, basically, that's what the bill is, just to keep these ingredients out of our kids' food. Uh, does anybody have any questions? Oh, yes, AB 23, I mean, yeah, 2316. It's called pupil nutrition. That's, well, that's the first part of the name, yes. Yes, public schools, yeah. Oh, oh, um, yeah, let me see.
You have to restate everyone's question or else Susan can't hear it.
All right, um, well, someone asked the name of the bill, I gave that, AB 2316. Someone has asked if this is just for K through 12. Let me see. California Public Schools. Anastasia, are you looking up this bill?
Yeah, I was, why? What do you mean, she's not?
Well, I, my impression was it was just K through 12, but I don't see that actually stated on the fact sheet, so that's the impression I have, but I can't 100% confirm that. Schools.
Oh.
California Public Schools, that's all it says.
Does that also affect, affect any machine products?
Yes, anything on the school campus.
Why, you know?
Yeah, that would, yeah, that would include that, yeah, though those foods can't be served. The only exception that they made was for fundraising events that happen outside of school hours. So that, and that was a recent amendment. So, you know, like if they're having a bake sale after school, they're not gonna monitor those types of things. But this is for anything served uh, or available during the school day. Anastasia, do you see anything in there about? I don't remember it saying that.
Children and schoolchildren and public schools.
Yes, I, I, I'm gonna say I believe it's K through 12. I can't 100% verify, but it does talk about schoolchildren. Okay, I think it's a pretty straightforward one. Are we ready to vote on this? All right, all those in favor of supporting this bill, please raise your hand.
We got 21 in person, we got two, you got two online, so we'll say 23, oh, plus two, so we'll say 25. Yeah, I'm counting that and then two.
I see at least six online.
Six, yeah, I see six.
Okay, so we'll say 27 votes for yes. Everyone can put your hands down.
Put your hands down.
And now uh, all those opposed? No hands up, any abstentions? All right.
That passes, okay. Thank you very much. So we were writing a support letter to the legislature on this.
Okay, thanks, Isabel. Thanks, everybody, for your vote. Now let's get started with the debates. Okay. I'm gonna move, I'm gonna do a camera move here so that everyone can see everybody. We'll see how that works. Okay. We are starting with the school board candidates tonight. So let's just bring them out. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome School Board President Jennifer Smith, School Board Vice President John Keane, and School Board Member Maria Leon Vasquez. Hey. Uh, Lynn, do you have the ability to do the timer? On your phone?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll uh, while she gets that set up, I'll time the first one. So we're gonna do uh, one minute of opening statements down the line. And uh, I have, for all the races tonight, I have a randomizer on my phone, so the order will be totally random. And so first for the opening statement is Jennifer. Okay.
Yeah. So hi, I'm Jennifer Smith.
Make sure, make sure you're holding your mic real close.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Smith. Um, I am proud to be on the school board of Santa Monica Malibu School Board. Um, I truly believe in the vision and the mission that we have set for our children. I think it's incredibly important for kids to be engaged and, and to be able to succeed and be met and their needs met where they are. Um, I've been in this district, I have two children in this district, uh, one in college now, one senior at the high school. Um, it's been an extraordinary journey, and I have been committed to their education and, and all of their peers. Yeah, I, it's, it's incredibly um, humbling to have been on the school board. I thought I knew a lot. I come up through PTA. I've been the PTA president at elementary, middle, and council level. I ran a couple of uh, campaigns for the district, School Bonn, and GS and GSH, and every day I learn something new um, while I'm on the board, and I just hope to continue. Oh, sorry, I'm done.
Next up is Maria.
Good evening, everybody. Maria Leon Vasquez. I think I'm the youngest one in the family. I, I've been on the board for now 24 years. And in those 24 years, I have to say, it's been a good experience. We've done a lot in terms of moving forward our mission and our vision, of course, not getting there. Um, the good thing about it is that I, my two children have gone through the district, and, and I look forward to the fact that I have grandchildren not coming up through the district. And so I'm excited to see that with, with, with the selection of the, the three of us were part of the, of the team that selected Dr. Shelton, and he's got a vision. And I think all of you heard his vision, and he's been presenting and taking that on the road through all the community. And I think we need to be on this board back again to be able to support him, to see the changes that are coming up, to make sure that we are able to reach the kids that are, they're not being successful still in, in our school district. We've tried a lot, and I think we have to say, we've been successful, but not 100%. So we need to make sure that we go back on, uh, back to the table and work on that. And so I'm looking forward to running with, with my, my colleagues.
Good evening, my name is John Keane. And I will say, having spent eight years as Maria Leon Vasquez's colleague, you, I, I've never seen anybody spend a full day at a conference and then go salsa dancing at 11:00 PM. So Maria, you don't gotta talk about energy and age. Maria's got, got it. I, I had not intended to be here for this, this election. I thought I was, I'd serve two terms and move on, but um, I see a need. I see a new superintendent Maria talks about. I see a need for community right now. I see a need post-COVID for leadership. And I love the fact that I feel like we're like a big equilateral triangle right here. We all represent different things, but we come together on a cohesive vision. And that's what our district needs right now. We have a lot of good, good, good initiatives in place. We gotta feed them, we gotta watch them grow, at the same time, we've gotta make sure that we're being responsive to our community and our students' needs, so very happy to be up here tonight.
Okay, thank you, uh, everybody, and uh, we are gonna start with a two-minute question, because I think this one needs a little bit more than just a one-minute soundbite. The rest of them are, are one-minute, although if uh, you feel like we need to go to two minutes, uh, let me know, we can, we can talk to the, the moderators backstage and see if we can work something out. Uh, but for the first one, it's a two-minute question. So the last time we considered this field of candidates four years ago, uh, we were in the middle of the COVID lockdown. Now, how are the students of today different from the students of five years ago? And how has instruction most changed, and what are the biggest issues with the district that still remain to be tackled? And we're starting with John on this one.
Great question, thank you, John. Yes, the kids have changed um, from COVID. We've all changed from COVID. We saw ninth graders come in with the emotional levels of seventh graders, sixth graders act like fourth graders, our kindergarteners act like they've never been away from their parents before. That has changed. The, there still are some behavioral issues. We are looking at how we interact with our children, how we resolve crises after they happen. Things will happen. We have committed to restorative justice, which does not stop things from happening. It's how we heal the community afterwards. So we really are spending time with that. We're spending times dealing with the mental uh, anguish that our kids are still functioning with. At the same time, some things have gotten better. Our kids uh, have a sense of resiliency that we're seeing. They, they do find, they are finding their joys again. We have found in more ways for engagement on our campuses. We go to our high school now, project-based learning, Project Lead the Way, the academy buildings that we're gonna be opening. These are engagement pathways. And by the way, just because it's at the high school
And you will appreciate this.
And our elementary schools. So I do believe there is more engagement for our kids now, right when they need it. But we also have to be aware of, of still the emotional
Well, most people are in the room.
We have to be aware of those issues that are still present in our, in our students from all levels. This is TK, our early learners. So there are some really nice things that we're seeing post-COVID in engagement, and our, our English language learners are, have, are doing better post-COVID than before. I don't know if there's a correlation, that, that probably is not. Maria may even want to speak more to Jennifer, but I do feel that we have, we, we managed COVID better than most. I do feel that we have, we, we managed COVID better than most, our vol, most vulnerable students are still vulnerable, and that's where our focus is.
Well, um just to follow up on that, you know, part of, part of the good thing about it is that I think, like John mentioned, that we really moved forward quickly with this whole pan, the pandemic, in terms of trying to get back into, into the, you know, the framework of, of opening up schools and, and welcoming the kids back in, into the facilities. Um of course, we've had a lot of issues with a lot of our children, that because I didn't realize the anxiety, the pandemic really cer, really developed a lot of anxiety amongst kids and them not wanting to come to school. So we're having to deal with that in the sense of trying to reach out to the families to see how we could best support them. Um if you go to the high schools, they have wellness centers, uh or rooms that are there that um they can, that most students can do drop-by and, and just have a consult, yeah, just sit there and just relax and just kind of, you know, um reach a, a nice equilibrium for themselves to continue the day. So there's a lot of mechanisms that we, we have set up, the big piece of it has been, is how do we bring back uh for some of those students that lost? You know, education to that process, because they were at home. And a lot of it is we picked up and it, and we've kind of refined the processes in terms of how we're going to, we're gonna um bring out our ac, our academic program. One of the key things that, that Dr. Dr. Shelton has brought out is the fact that we're setting up processes and, and strategies in terms of how do we reach these, these, the children that have, that we haven't been able to reach and be successful. And I think that's what, what, if you look back, everybody always brings up that, that, you know, that, that Dr. Noguero plan, what is Dr. Noguero's plan, if you look at the last page uh on the executive summary, it will tell you. We had great initiatives, but we lacked the, the strategies or processes, the ways in which we would approach ed- education so that we could reflect back and see if, if our teacher taught this way and they got no results, why, wasn't there any results? So there was a process by which now, we're really doing a lot of professional development to get the teachers on board with us, so that we can make those changes and find out really, what is it that we need to make those moves to be able to make changes.
Wow, it's um not easy to follow two people who have a lot of, a lot of really good information that's getting out there and, and what our district is doing, um I actually have a senior this year who's starting high school in COVID, and uh a, a college-age son who had his senior year in COVID, and so I saw the effects that um, that the pandemic had on them, I just, um, I mean, h- how would it be to start a new school in lockdown, I mean, it's really, um, you know, it was really profound and it was really, uh, it was a very interesting transition to go back into school, I, so to um to build on the mental health capacity of the um drop-in centers, and we have been piecing together many, many more programs, there are groups for all the kids at, for all the kids at Samo, there's individual mental health resources for them, um we have um and one of the, uh, one of the better things at the high school that has, that was almost implemented, implemented just before the pandemic, but actually we see um great asset in is flex time at the high school, where our kids are getting their needs met, that during the day at school, and so we're much more in tune with them, um and figuring out how to have them master skills as a, um and, and how to have them um gain the confidence that they might have lost, um and the other thing that I would say on top of, um, sorry, the um had one thing in my head that I also wanted to add to that, which was um I'm sorry, um I'll, oh, I'll, I'll, I'll continue, I'm sure it'll come, oh, I know, uh it was about um building back things that, because I've, you know, I've been through the high school for the last five, seven years, and I still see things that we need to build back, we still need to build back um s- some of the things that weren't existent before, like giving kids opportunities to understand um their future and, and careers.
Well, I need it for, as well, yeah. Uh okay, so now we're gonna do one minutes for the rest of the questions. Uh okay, so Congressman Steny Hoyer famously said, "A budget is a statement of values." In that context, how do you think about some of the major budgeting choices you've had to make in your last term as reflective of Santa Monica values? Can we start with Maria?
Well, what, what, what we've done, I, I think in my twenty-four years, we've looked and seen what was the basic need of students. We try to reflect the budget to meet the needs of students, to make sure that all their academic, um, the their academic needs and, and their sports and arts and everything that's aligned with making sure that they have a good success at what their SMFSD is met, again, um it's difficult because this community has a, sometimes a lot more wants and needs. So it's, it's been one of those things that we try to at least look at what, basically, what are the needs of all students, of all students in in the school district, so that we, we again move programming and so forth to meet those needs as we do the budget.
Really is random, it's random, hey.
And so again, to build on Maria, I think that Dr. Shelton has created priorities, one of them, top priorities is the budget. He is assessing um all the spending, all the spending in the district with all the principals at every school site at the district level, and I think we are um, we are honing in on the most efficient, most um best way to meet those needs of our, of our budget that affects in the, in the classroom and is most, mostly, and affects kid, you know, obviously is affecting all the kids. I think it's um I think we've created some amazing um budgetary shifts in engagement. I think putting, creating these um academies that are gonna open and these block schedules for kids and building it down from the high school down to the element, middle school down to the elementary school is a way for us to, yep, that's my time.
So to build upon what Jennifer was saying, we should be tag-teaming, uh program analysis. We can do anything in Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District, we can't do everything, so we have to find out what's working, what is not working, feed what is good. Um we know what our Santa Monica values are, we have nurses, we have art, we have music, we have science, we have playground access, we have preschool, we have after-school, we have before-school, these are not things that exist at most K-12 districts in the state of California. A lot of that is because of the generosity of Santa Monica voters. I will say a specific, where we spent money wisely, is when we took our ninth and tenth grade English classes and put everybody in the same class. They were learning the same cla, same books, reading the same books anyway. But now every child in ninth and tenth grade English at Samo is in the same classroom. The only thing that's changed is who you're sitting next to. To do that, we lowered class size slightly, had a, a little additional PD for the teachers. It's been a huge success, the kids are learning next to all of the students at the school, we hope it drives an engagement for uh advanced placement, which we know is an indicator of success in college and higher education. So that's a good, specific example of the money being spent.
Thank you. Okay, school districts around the country have experienced severe teacher shortages. Can you share with us what the Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District staffing levels are at present? And are there any plans to fill gaps in hiring diversity, and we start with John?
Our K-12 sta, uh staffing levels are still some of the lowest per student in classroom in California for public school districts. Um I believe it's twenty-four to one, K-three twenty-seven to, at, yeah, twenty-seven. Point, point being, to keep our, our positions filled, we need to A, pay people more money. We just did a, a second raise in four years for our staff, that'll help us. We know we wanna, we have done a great job in finding uh administrators who reflect the diversity of our district, we're not doing as well with teachers. It's hard with turnover, but as more people leave, we hope to get younger teachers in who reflect our diversity. Um that's important, the other thing is, it's, it's really expensive to live around here. So we need to figure that out, we need to figure that out as a community, it's too expensive for a lot of people to live around here, specifically our teachers. So that's another thing we can do as a district to try to aid this situation, but I think we do a good job of keeping our classrooms low and supporting our teachers where they need to be, and by the way, if a class is too small, it ceases to exist as a class.
Right, so uh I do, I, I agree, I think that we, we do a good job of keeping our teachers, I mean, we have, the longevity that we have in our, for our staff is remarkable compared to other places, I think that um we are a place people want to be and we need to seek out, um, we need to seek out the diversity that we need and the diversity that we see in our students and in our community, and we need to be able, and, and I believe that is happening, I know that the, um, we are now, again, another sort of post-pandemic, we are reaching out further, reaching out more, reaching out more often to uh in job fairs, and I, I know that our staff just went to Laco, they had a huge job there, I think we need to fill special, special education is a very specific place where we need, we have to do more and we have to be more diligent and we, and we might have to pay more, I don't, I, whatever, um but special education department needs a little more tending. Um I think that uh when people leave our district, because they think things are rosier somewhere else, what I hear is that they like it here better.
Yes, well, you know, it's interesting that, that, I agree with both John and Jen, I have a little different take on it. Mine is that we need to be able to, to further diversify the, the teachers in this district. And I think that's been a big, big um statement made by a lot of our diverse students in this district. Um and one of the good things that we recently hired, we haven't had, people think that we can do the work, but we've had a really a, a very slim, um, a really tight, um, what is it, central office staff. And we just hired somebody that's part, that's gonna be helping our, our, um, Mark, Dr. Mark Kelly, who's our superintendent and human resources, that's actually gonna be uh the, the director of human resources, that will hopefully be, will be going out to doing recruiting, not just at Laco, but at many of the areas and, and those community colleges, not community colleges, but um state colleges uh that have a lot of more diverse uh population that's, that's educating it, that's graduating in education. Because I've seen that happen and hopefully that will be out, I even told them I would even, I would even, you know, volunteer to do that, especially in our Latino education um, um conferences.
Now, it's a new uh, new system, we had some notes after our last meeting about the audio, so we're uh, we're doing our best, okay. The next question. Five years ago, the district left the Head Start program and funded its own early childhood education program. What are some of the challenges to our early educate, early childhood edu- education system? And what strategies are the district using to solve them? And this time, John's up first again.
So, it's a great question, so our staff came to us to transition us out of Head Start. Because they saw they were spending eighty percent of their time doing work for twenty percent of the students, and we were no longer attracting students who fit the criteria for diver, for Head Start, to the point where they wanted us to start a, a, a very young toddler Head Start program. In fact, within six months after we left Head Start, we would have been kicked out of Head Start. The demographics of Santa Monica changed that dramatically. The biggest issues we face, and by the way, the reason why we went out of Head Start was to use our resources more wisely, that allows us to give so if, 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 if interventions or, or resources are given to one group of students, now they're given to all students. So now our resources are helping all the kids in our early education program, the biggest problem we have is staffing. We always feel we can grow a little more, sometimes staffing is stopping us, we're doing okay with our elementary pro, with our preschool programs, but our wraparound services are, are lacking teachers, we need to get more staff.
Maria's up next.
Yes, I guess we got, I, I just saw that, you know, we got criticized heavily by certain people in the community because we let um the, the Head Start money, the federal money leave. But one of the key things that we, when, when this board did decide to, to, to give and support our own, you know, um, early childhood education and, and just is that the reason why we could allow other families, many more families that couldn't qualify for Head Start and couldn't pay private, that could, we could, we could charge them on a sliding scale and they would be able to receive, you know, services from us, which is, which is very key, and it was successful. Because I think after the first year, um, we were ma, we were making a profit, unfortunately COVID hit, and if it wasn't for the profit that we made, you were able to sustain our, our workforce there using the, the, the profits that we had made that one year. Of course, ramping it up after, after COVID has been hard, like John said, to, to hire teachers. We're going out there, but it's been very difficult, because when you look at it, the, the, most of the workers are, are paid very low compared to others in the district.
And just um adding to that, uh one of the things that I think has shifted the program is mandatory TK. It has completely shifted the, uh, how, uh, obviously adding, an unfunded, by the way, TK. Um so we are, um, so we have our model of preschool has shifted now, we have one less year of, um, of being able to um support it with outside funding, of people paying for preschool. Um so I think be, on top of the staffing, on top of the shift of model, um it's, it's been more of a struggle, but we're always adapting. We're always, I mean, we have an incredible staff that is always working towards the next best thing, and they are. Um the services they provide from zero to five, zero to four, um in uh early childhood now, um obviously four-year-old program is now in the TK pro, TK program, and that'll expand, and they're working on the expansion of that for the next two years. And um we're just going to have to move along and shift with the, the things that come.
Okay. So the district has a ban on students' cellphones in school. But parents report back that this policy hasn't been enforced and students sometimes hide their phones behind books in the classroom. What are the effects on students of cellphone use in schools, and do you agree with this policy, and if so, should there be stricter enforcement? And we'll start with Jennifer.
So I think we have practices in the district, I don't, there's, I don't know of a policy about cellphones in, in classrooms, I, I have have experience with kids with cellphones, I know they are not allowed in elementary or middle school, and kids um are going to, uh, parents are giving their kids phones and they are bringing them to school. They wanna, you know, for whatever reasons they have, they wanna be in touch with them after school. I think it's very well-managed in elementary and middle school, I think if there are issues, there might be in, in middle school, um teachers and principals are managing them with the kids and the parents. Um I would say at the high school, it's a different animal in the sense that, um, you know, kids are more independent. Um the policy of the high school doesn't, oh, you know, doesn't, wants to have flexibility. I think that there needs to be more thought and we need to understand the practices that are already in place and exist, we have to understand where parents and children are falling short.
And I'll finish your sentence with where they're falling short and where they are not, I don't know if that's where you were going or not. Yeah, I, I agree with Jennifer, I don't, I don't believe we have a, a firm policy, I do believe we have practices. This is what's crazy, if I'm in high school, this right here, I can record a movie, edit, and then broadcast it through the internet to stream it onto, onto this, and to here. I can create so many wonderful, I can record music, I can do so much with this amazing computer. Um so we, we can't not use them, but we have to make sure they're not being used in negative ways, which is why I'm firmer on that, I, 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 I would love to see us come up with a way to get buy-in from parents, so we could limit cellphones in middle school, smartphones. I would, other schools have done it, it does not exist without buy-in from parents, we cannot mandate that, it will not go over. And by the way, in elementary school, people gotta parent. I mean, you gotta parent. We are in loco parentis, but we can't, you know, take the phone out of your kid's hand.
No, no, it's true, no, that's true, I think it's great that you don't have policy, and it's, in, in fact, one of our school board members is, is in an actual meeting this mo, this evening with some of the grandparents, and, but basically, it up, to me, it all falls, and, and the parents have to take our responsibility in terms of the use of the, uh, of the cellphones by the, by the student. Elementary school, I, I do agree, they should not have um phones in, that basically any need that the student needs can go to the office. Middle school is a different story, because again, as John mentioned, you can use that, that, that cellphone for a lot of things. Even though in the past, I would say definitely they need to use it, but now, most kids, most, all students have a, a, a pa, a device that they could use, so it's not that they have to always have that phone there, but I know that the need is that when sometimes they're doing projects, you can use that phone to record or do whatever you need to do, and edit and so forth on that phone. So it really, there is a need for it, but again, I would So it really, there is a need for it. But again, I would say let's, let's have a conversation with parents and see, in a conversation with them, like you, John, that, to see what we, what policy we can end up with.
Okay, thank you. So try to draw, draw some of the distinctions, even though we have three incumbents running and there's been some interesting minor points of contention. For this next question, I noticed that each of you answered in a pretty different way. So I thought it would be interesting to see what the discussion was like. The topic was the appropriate level of police officers in the school district. Um, and we had a, we have the wa, a pretty wide range in responses. So just wanted to ask if you could share your philosophy on when Santa Monica police officers should be present in the schools, if at all? And are students safer with police officers on site? And we start with Jennifer.
So no, I, um, I don't think that Santa Monica Police Department, um, police officers should be on school grounds, um, on a regular basis. I think resource officers are amazing. I think that, um, we have some of those and they do an amazing job with some of the kids. I think the, um, our, I think our, I think what we need to do is engage with our kids about behavior and about the world around us. And I think we need to talk to them about violence in the world and what they see and how they feel and the mental health capacity that we have. We have to grow the mental health capacity that we have um, to be able to, um, have them deal with any, anything that they're coping with. I think, um, I think we have, I mean, we have security officers on middle, in middle school and high school. I think they do an incredible job. I think that they're, that they're part of the kids' lives and their world and they connect with them. And they're really important on campus and they, um, I think that they, they have protocols and they have training. Uh, so.
Maria.
Wonderful. Okay. I, this is where we kind of differentiate a little bit. Um, no, I, I agree that we, the, the, I, I support the resource officers, the police officers to be on the campuses. And mainly because they're there not every day to look to see what's going on on the campuses, but they're there to support certain activities on the campuses. That I do agree. They have been there for, whether it's, it's, it's a panel on whatever discussion. They've, they're always being asked to be part of a panel, um, or graduations or activities. I think that's great. I think what we need to do is, is to engage the, the police more in activities in terms of, of, um, with, with the PTAs. And so that they, the community understands what the role of the police is. Cause we really can't, we, we really need for them to, to really work with our, you know, security officers on the campuses just for the security aspect of it. You know, everybody wonders, well, how do you keep it secure? You keep it secure. And it can't be done just with our security officers or the Santa Monica PD and even SMC PD. I think there's a community effort between all the three agencies to help us keep our, our campuses secure.
It's funny. I think we probably are fairly in agreement on this, but write it in different ways. Because I have, this is the shortest answer I put, which was only when requested by the site principal for specific needs. And we have an existing board policy in place where when a law officer has to enter a campus under any pretenses. So we have that policy. And I agree with you. There are events where we, we, we want to have more security. I mean, I remember back in the day when the kids were there and, you know, the Beverly Hills, Samo High basketball games. Got a little crazy. Who would think? But it got, I mean, you want to have a little more security. But then also what Maria's saying and what Jennifer's saying, like I remember in the day when the police would come visit us in school for like a, you know, what are you going to do for work or, or, or who's in your, you know, who are the people in your neighborhood to go back to, uh, that song? So I do think we can do a little work at the elementary level so that people understand the role of police. And it doesn't become this, you know, back to like what we had like in ninety-two, ninety-three under Darryl Gates. But we have something where the people respect in your community. Um, I think we, we, we get, get back to that, that community policing. But, but no, you can't come on our campus without permission.
Okay. So now this is the last question before your closing statement. And, uh, probably won't need to time it, but we'll see how long you guys want to go. Everyone likes to say, go Vikings. The question is, and you can't repeat what someone said before. What is your favorite Santa Monica Malibu sports success story from this past full year? Uh, favorite team, favorite moment, anything like that. And we start with Jennifer.
So the, my son plays for Santa Monica High School baseball team. And they went to the championship division game and that was my favorite success story of Santa Monica sports. But can I say something? I, well, no, I don't want to take it away from, I, I can't say more things. Okay. I won't take more things. Here.
John's next.
I'm next. I, I, no, I'm not going to do where you think I'm going to go. Our football team kicked butt this year and it, it created a vibe on campus and in the community. People were showing up. We had to build bleachers. Who would have thought? So I think our football team deserves a lot of credit and that, and not just the football. Maria, don't get mad at me. Oh!
No, I know. I was thinking of the, uh, we had for the first time girls' football flag. Everywhere the camp. No, the flag, no, 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 not, you know, so women can still play football, definitely, but we can, we did it. And we were great. And I think what was so great about it, you look at the makeup of the girls, it was a very diverse team. So it was great to see them out there and having such a great, to just having fun with their coaches, just having fun. And we were out there for a few of the games. It was great in Bunny Lee.
Great. Okay. So now we'll do closing statements. We're back on to one minute and John's up first.
It, it, we, we talk a lot about, um, public service and servant leadership. And Jerry knows, as we talk about it, I, I spent half my life in public school and half my life in Quaker school, which gave me a, a real sense of, um, what we do around our community is more important than what we do for ourselves. It is a pleasure to be up here with, with Jennifer and Maria and not be arguing about anything, but being excited about the work in front of us. We generally, we love the work we do and we are blessed to be able to do this. What a gift to be able to provide for students in the, in this wonderful community of Santa Monica and Malibu. So I, I, I'm so happy to be here and, and with them. And I do want to say as an apology to my colleagues who are going to be up here talking, we're going to have to, I'm going to have to leave right after this is over because I'm driving to Sacramento in the morning. So I apologize to college and, and rent board for not being able to stick around with y'all.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to, to be with you all this evening. You know, I bring back, I bring with me twenty-four years and, you know, before that, another ten years of activities here. Twenty-four years on the board and another probably ten before that in the community. So I bring with me all my knowledge base, the fact that I'm married to Tony Vasquez and I think we make a great team. And, and so with that, you know, I want to say that, that there's a lot of diversity in our, in, in, in our school board. And I represent, you know, the, the, um, the immigrant, social, lower socioeconomic and working class community. I grew up in Santa Monica. I've been here in Santa Monica since, since nineteen fifty-nine. So I understand the needs of all, I think, of everybody here in the city of Santa Monica. And I'd like to be there to start making some of the changes for, for the kids that are not being, not being as successful as everyone else is.
Yes, thank you for having us here. Um, it has been my, an extraordinary, um, experience for me. I never thought I'd ever be a politician. I guess, I, I actually don't consider myself a politician. Um, I'm a, I'm a worker, um, practical, I, um, but, and it has been an extraordinary experience being able to find what I have been passionate about, which I didn't even know until my kids got into school. And I realized how important it was to support them and to advocate for them and to make sure. And this is an extraordinary community. I mean, with the support that the San, Santa Monica voters and Malibu voters have given to our kids is extraordinary. And it's really important to do it thoughtfully and carefully and well. And I believe in the vision that this district has. I believe, I believe in the choices of Dr. Shelton and the choice that we made in making him superintendent and being able to support him in that role and being able to lift all kids up. And I would like to start, sorry, say that I have my nephew's birthday dinner party is going on. And I'm going to try to join that too.
Thank you. And once again to our candidates, board member Leon Vasquez, President Smith, and Vice President Keen. Thanks so much for being here. Okay. So now we're going to go to the rent control board, uh, debate with a little bit of a different dynamic. Uh, instead of having, uh, three incumbents for three spots who are. Let's, uh, bring the attention back. Okay. So instead of having three incumbents who are, uh, running for three spots, we now have no incumbents in this field. We have two open seats. And we have three candidates who are new to, uh, the Santa Monica political sphere. And we're going to get a chance to meet them and hear from them directly. So please welcome Kay Ambreeze, Phyllis Dudak, Michael Kirschbaum. All right. So thank you all for being here and we're going to start with opening statements, one minute each. And, um, I've got the randomizer plugged in for our new field. And first up is Kay.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. Okay. Can you guys hear me? So hi everyone. My name is Cam Breeze. I've lived in Santa Monica since twenty fifteen in the Pico neighborhood in a rent controlled unit. Um, I've been a lifelong advocate for rental affordability and renter protections. And the reason for my passion is because growing up, I experienced homelessness. But my family was fortunate enough to receive section eight housing, uh, when I was in high school. And that really, um, inspired me to be an advocate for, for others. Um, and, and to become involved with more organizations, which I did in college and in law school. And then, uh, again, when I moved here to Santa Monica, getting involved with SMUR. Um, and now I'd like to use my education and lived experience to help serve my community here in Santa Monica and to be on the rent board. And I hope to have your vote. Thank you.
Okay. Michael, you're next.
Hi, good evening. I'm Michael Kirschbaum. A little about me, I'm a parent, I've been living in Santa Monica for eighteen years. I've been in my current, uh, rental unit for thirteen years. I have three children, uh, one at Will Rogers, one at Jams, and one at Samo High. He's a freshman. Uh, my wife is a public education teacher in LAUSD. She's a proud UTLA member. And, um, here, uh, really I just want to protect renters' rights and make it stronger and I'm hoping for your support. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you. I'm Phyllis Dudak and I am a renter in a rent controlled unit in Santa Monica and an engaged and active senior in our community. Uh, serving on the Noma Neighborhood Association Board, the Annenberg Beach House Dosen Council, Santa Monica Conservancy Program Committee, and served on the Historic San Vicenti Coalition. I became involved with renter rights in two thousand twenty-two, sounding the six percent alarm and became an advocate for measures RC and EM. I joined SMUR at that time for the first time. And I have attended steering committee meetings since then. I fill my past background, working with numerous communities in the city of Los Angeles. During a thirty-six-year career in public service brings experience and insight that will be helpful in working with our diverse communities in Santa Monica. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now, uh, we'll go to the, the next, the, the next questions. And, uh, just a note on format here, uh, since this race, uh, there's, we have one more person sitting here than there are spots. So I don't think this is going to be like our DA debate where people were calling out one particular person in, in the field. So I just wanted to say that if, if you hear something that you disagree with and want to respond to that someone else has said, we can allot an extra thirty seconds to let you respond to it. No pressure to do that, but if you do want to draw a contrast with someone else on the stage, you're welcome to do that anytime. Um, okay. I don't expect that to come up with this first question though, which is, uh, what has your experience been like as a Santa Monica renter? All three of you are renters here. Uh, how would you apply your own lived experience to your role on the rent control board? And we'll start with Phyllis.
I've been a renter for many years. I guess I've been termed a longtime renter. And to be honest with you, I've, I've had a very good experience, uh, in, as a renter in Santa Monica. But I know, I know of neighbors who have not. I know of my next door neighbor who went through, I won't say the word, but he was really bad with construction. And he was put into a, oh, I can't go on and on. It's only one minute. Okay. Uh, so also I know of renters who have been abused and frightened and scared in terms of, um, the Ellis Act, seniors not knowing their rights. Um, so I feel as I've gotten more into this, that I, I'm just very, very interested in repri, and in responding, representing, helping and really getting into, um, the social aspect too of the situation.
So, um, like I said, I've moved to Santa Monica in twenty fifteen. Since then, I'm now in my third apartment since living here. Um, and in the various places that I've lived, I've had a variety of different neighbors. Um, and I think what's great is when I have neighbors that have been long-term tenants and there's a, a variety of different, um, um, rental, uh, prices that people are paying. And that's due to rent control. And I think one, rent is too high and we need more rent control so that when people are moving in, um, their, their rent isn't disproportionate to their income.
Um, my current landlord, he's all right. You know, I mean, he takes my check every month. Uh, but my previous place, where I lived at twelve years ago, I did have a big problem with mold. The bathroom had mold and I was starting to sneeze and I'm very fair skinned and my, my eczema, it just wasn't that good. And finally convinced him that there were a lot of complaining to get rid of the mold. And there was a fight over how much I was going to be reimbursed for the hotel and he refused to do what the city said he was supposed to pay. So anyway, it's finally resolved. I get back and I'm at the hotel and my sneezing and stuff goes away. I get back, uh, and of course I wake up the next morning and my sneezing and everything's back. And so there's, there was always a storage room underneath, uh, and I was able to get in the storage room that was directly underneath where my bathroom was. And there was an old shower there that just had this line of mold. And so he had zero interest in actually taking care of or fixing the problem. And that's, that's actually why my wife, that we left. Um, this is the same landlord when my neighbor died. Um, he went in with his wife a few hours later and walked out with stuff. So I'm aware that these things exist, people like this exist, and I want to, you know, protect our renters from people like this.
Okay. So as I mentioned in the introduction, we have two open seats. None of you are incumbent rent control board commissioners. And this office requires a lot of knowledge about history, processes and legal functions. Uh, as you run for office, what have you been doing to learn how to become an elected or rent control board commissioner? Starting with Kay.
So in the past few months, um, I've been meeting with current rent board members, um, like, like Danny and, and Kurt and Anastasia Foster. I've been working closely with Phil's here. I think we're going to be working together closely, running a campaign. So she and I have been working closely, especially with Anastasia, who's been so kind to offer her time and expertise. As you guys know, she's been on the rent board for more than two turns because she was appointed before. So she had so much knowledge to, to, to bestow on us. Um, I've also met with other former rent board members, um, like Jen Kennedy, who was so nice to sit down and go through a, um, an actual agenda packet with me and show me how, um, a meeting really works and explain all the nuances. I met with Jonathan Holub, who's on the, who is the, the new executive, um, director of the rent control board. I've just tried to educate myself in any way, um, with any material that's available, whether that's watching rent one-on-one videos or any other printed materials and any other pieces of information that are available. I continue, will continue to do that. Thank you.
Is this one minute?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I have been preparing and continue to prepare and will continue to prepare, to be prepared. In the past couple of months, Kay and I have been meeting with Anastasia Foster, who is amazing and such a dedicated person, eight years with the Rent Control Board. She's really, she's amazing, and I want to thank her for taking time to spend with us and hope to continue working with her. We've also met, Kay and I have also met with Danny, and, well, she mentioned that, so I won't mention. We've worked with Danny and Kurt. And I also met with Jonathan Holub, the agency executive director, to learn more about the agency functions and the working relationships with the rent, with working relationships with the Rent Control Board. I attended the Rent Control and Landlord 101 Seminar early this month, which are offered to the public twice a year, and I highly recommend renters attend and of landlords. Thank you.
Hi, I've met with Danny. I've met with Jen Kennedy. The other day, she sat down with me as well and went over a packet, and her biggest advice to me was, you know, do the reading for the meeting, is what she said. As far as other boards I've served on, the Nishantophila, I've been on the board there. I was there while we hired a rabbi, which was a very contentious process for any, as you can imagine, for any religious institution finding their spiritual leader. But we were able to do that, and I know I can do just as well, you know, I'm meeting with more people. I think more is, I'm out in the community. I'm a parent. I'm walking with people who rent, my neighbors, old neighbors, new neighbors. People talk to me, and they tell me what's going on, and I always have an ear open, and I'm always willing to help. And I think that's the biggest thing that I offer, is that I'm here to help. Thank you.
I'll be fine. Okay, Michael, you're up first for the next one, which is, what are your priorities for your first term on the Rent Control Board?
My biggest priority is ADUs. What, on social media, I follow, I like to follow people who I disagree with, so I know what's going on. And he's a West Side multifamily owner, and what he's doing is he's taking garages where you're parking or where you're storing, where you're doing stuff for your businesses, or he's putting your e-bikes or whatever you have there, and they're tearing them out, and they're putting in new units. And you've now lost your parking or where you're storing for your business or whatever you're using that space for, and that's now gone. So that's my biggest thing, is what are we doing about that? Are we going to be able to stop that, or is there going to be something with the landlord and then also GS money as well? Like, there's a lot of different things, but this is a big problem. There's a bill now in the Assembly that allows any, that passes, allow any multifamily to rip out and put in eight new units. So that means any place, any of you who have parking spaces, they could disappear forever. You know, it could be hard for you to, you could be parking blocks away to put your groceries for safety at night. This is my biggest issue. Got the bell? Thank you.
So my top issue is renter education. I've seen firsthand, as a SMUR hotliner over the past year, that a lot of residents are ill-informed about their rights. So I plan to address this issue by first becoming as knowledgeable as I can myself about the law and then to educate the public wherever I can possible, whether that is attending workshops, Zoom meetings, neighborhood association meetings, pub meetings. I plan to make myself as available as I can. Another top issue of mine is making information as accessible as possible, and that includes making it accessible in as many languages as possible. I want all information from the city to be bilingual, and that does not just mean in English and Spanish and not just in printed form. I'd like to see the information on the websites in English, Spanish, other languages available on the internet.
Thank you. Okay, and I are on the same page as far as education goes. First and foremost, I've seen myself honoring the integrity and the spirit of our rent control law and all the, and the various ordinances and regulations that the city has put in place. Expanding engagement with stakeholders, meeting renters where they are, and renter education, including landlord education, protecting the vulnerable, keeping an eye on trends, including the worst aspects of speculative real estate, and working to strengthen renter protections are among my top priorities. And this may include some initiatives this year on the ballot. We'll see what happens.
Okay, thank you. So the next question goes to you first, Phyllis. What would you say are the main objectives of rent control in Santa Monica?
Well, the main objective is stabilization of rent and predictability. Also, the law says that everyone is, it's equal opportunity. There, anyone in a rent-controlled unit has the same protections, no matter what their income, no matter what they're paying for rent, and basically, no matter who they are. They're very strong discrimination, anti-discrimination rules. And also, I just read that about the ordinance that the City Council passed, adding household status to the protections. And it's the first, yeah, it's the first city in California to do this. So, thank you.
So the purpose of Santa Monica's rent control law is, first of all, it's mission-based, and it's to preserve our city's economic diversity. Without having rent control in the city of Santa Monica, to live in Santa Monica would just be unattainable except for a wealthy few. So rent control is so important so that we have a diverse community that's accessible to more than just a few. And without rent control, I personally would have been priced out of Santa Monica quite some time ago, and I think that's probably true for most of us in this room. So I also think it's important for all of us here who believe in these protections to continue to stand up for rent control and to fight for it.
I think the mission of the Rent Control Board is to make sure we stay in our homes, families, single people, whoever. We want to stay. We want to be protected. I love Measure RC that was passed two years ago that kept the rates only increasing every 3% every year, which I remember writing that check when we got that 6% increase, and I was like, what the heck's going on? So it's just, for forty years, you know, people in this room and in the city have fought for renters' rights, and I feel like the torch is going to be passed to me, and I want to continue with that and just fight to keep everyone in their homes.
Okay, rent control in Santa Monica is constantly under attack. Recent years have seen various efforts to undermine it, including from our own council. We have a two-part question on this, so each one will be one minute as if it was its own question. We'll start with this. How would you respond to the idea that rent control should be means-tested so that it applies to low-income renters in different ways than it applies to middle-class renters? And we'll start with Phyllis.
I'm absolutely against that. I don't have any more to say except no. Our law is just wonderful the way it is. I mean, you just have to be a renter in a rent-controlled building to be protected with all the protections that the law includes. Is that part one?
Yeah, I think, as we all remember, it was really unfortunate when that happened in City Council. It did put our rent control under attack as it was. And I think that's why it's really important for the City Council to consult with the Rent Control Board whenever they're making decisions that have to do with rent control, because the Rent Control Board is the knowledgeable body. They're the ones that deal with these issues day in and day out, and that's why they are elected to take this up as their main issue. So as you guys remember, that issue was handled very late at night, and it was an idea that, you know, I think was not well thought out. And had the rent board been consulted, maybe they would have understood that the means testing was probably going to erode rent control completely because it would have deemed it unconstitutional.
Of course, I agree. Yeah, it was really disgusting that I tried to do all late-night shenanigans. And I think what they were trying to do was to divide us into two different groups. One's paying a certain percentage per month, another one's paying a different percentage a month. And it was a basic divide-and-conquer strategy, and luckily, it did not pass. It's no shock. They're not, didn't want to come to the Santa Monica Democratic Club of Eight. That's, I don't believe in democracy. Yeah, again, it was disgusting. A friend texted me that next morning and told me what was going on, and I was shocked. And I'm glad we were able to make sure that didn't happen, and nothing like that would ever happen on my watch.
Thank you. Okay, so part two is thinking about the same issue, about how rent control can be under attack at any time. What experiences do you have in your career or background of fighting back against forces that you disagree with? And we'll start with Michael.
I mean, the biggest thing, when I moved to Los Angeles, I wanted to have a career as a writer and a director. I quickly learned director was very difficult again, too. So I started, you know, as a PA, and I dealt with a lot of contentious bosses and execs for many, many years. And I think that translates to, you know, what's going on with people trying to take away our renters' rights today. Again, I feel that there's a long history, and I want to be a part of that history and help that history and help keep our, you know, keep our landlords out of our pockets and keep the big developers and the corporations away from our money and keep us safe in our homes.
Thank you. We'll go to Phyllis next.
I'm just thinking of a recent situation with a homeless, well, with a person who was just about to be homeless. She had worked for twenty years but was living on Social Security, and she'd been in an apartment for twenty years. I mean, she worked, she worked longer than twenty years, but she was in the apartment for twenty years and had an arrangement, oh, we have one minute, with her landlord, and she was paid a few days late because of her Social Security check. Anyway, she got evicted. And I didn't know her too well, but I heard about it, and I was able to reach out and make contact with an advocate for the homeless who was out here from Arizona. And she was able to help me get her, and I really advocated for this woman to get her into the Project Lock Key program. I listened to Governor Newsom every day with his, and I heard about that, and I just jumped in with it. And I feel so grateful that I was able to help one person.
So I think the question was, what has been my experience fighting back against forces, is that right? So I think I'm going to answer this question by saying that, as a minority, so I am a Latina, and I do come from a lower socioeconomic background. I face difficulties every day, specifically, I'd say, in obtaining my education, college or higher education. And the way that I fight back, and as I think many people of color know, you just have to work twice as hard as any person in the privileged class. So I think that my experience in daily life has given me that perspective.
Okay, so one of the most consequential pieces of legislation regarding California renters has been the Costa-Hawkins Act of 1994. We have another two-part question about that. First, can you describe the impact that Costa-Hawkins has had on Santa Monica renters? And we'll go with Michael first.
The biggest thing, the biggest impact Costa-Hawkins has had on Santa Monica renters is obviously when a person vacates their unit, it goes up the market rate, you know. My mother grew up in Astoria, Queens, and she had, she was able to get her parents had their, my grandparents had their rent-controlled apartment, and she was able to take over that, and it stayed at that level, didn't go up to vacant, didn't go up to market rate once the person left the premises. So I mean, that's the biggest thing is, it's, sure, you know, I'm paying X amount of dollars right now because I've been in my unit for twelve years, but once I leave, the next person's going to pay whatever. It's going to be $3,500 or some ridiculous number like that, and that's a huge, and that's destroying, you know, younger families and diversity of moving into the city, and it's had a devastating effect on rent in the city and throughout the whole state, actually.
Kay, you're up next.
So the biggest impact of Costa-Hawkins is that it's eroded affordability. It makes our community, like Michael said, it makes our community less diverse and less affordable to most. And also, it prevents people from moving around. So in situations where families expand, whether that's due to marriage or children or bringing in additional family members, if you need more space than if you are paying a certain amount and you've been there for ten, twelve years, and all of a sudden you need more space and you have to pay market rent, you know, that's a game changer. You either have to absorb the cost of a market-rate rental unit or decide to move your expanded family into a smaller space. And on the flip side, sometimes seniors who would like to downsize are not able to, would like to downsize, but they don't want to have the choice of paying market-rate rent. So they stay in their units.
Yes, for twenty-five years, this law has been on the books. And for twenty-five years, as Kay said, it's eroded affordability. California is one of the most expensive renter states in the country, and people are leaving because of it. I remember speaking to Tom Hayden, ran into him at Pavilions. I had worked on one of his campaigns. I ran into him, and he said, he was very upset. He said he came in the middle of the night, this no-fan fair, so there wasn't a chance for people to really protest it or anything. And he said he was so concerned, now this is 1995, said he was so concerned that it was going to really mess up our diversity here in this city, and it would become a city that's only for one class, basically. And that was 1995, he said that. He voted against it. So yeah, so that's, okay, so that's the time. Thank you.
Okay, part two on Costa-Hawkins. If the Justice for Renters Act passes this November, it would repeal the Costa-Hawkins Act and allow local jurisdictions to decide whether they want to create new rent control laws. If elected, what reforms or policies would you like to seek to change in our local law? We'll start with Phyllis.
Thank you. Well, the repeal of Costa-Hawkins would be one of the most, one of the best things that could happen, really. And I hope that we'll all make sure that that happens because it will give cities, there are sixteen rent-controlled cities in California, and it would give each of them the opportunity to kind of ream to kind of reimagine some sensible potential modifications. There were never any modifications in this thing, that's why it's kind of gone off the rails, in my mind. Of course, it would call for, you know, major input from experts and stakeholders, but one of the things that we might be able to do is expand the housing stock somewhat. Because Costa Hawkins, I mean, because rent controls, many people in rent control don't even realize, is that it's only for the older buildings built from 1979 and before. So, okay.
Michael, you're up.
If the Justice for Renters Act passes, which I hope it does, I immediately want, once someone vacated their unit, the next person moving in would be at that same rate, it wouldn't go up the market rate. Another thing I'd want to do is disallow people from removing housing stock from rental units. I would basically get rid of the Ellis Act and Costa Hawkins is what I would do. And from there, you know, I think those are the two biggest things right there, is increasing the, we also increased the housing stock because it wouldn't go, like Phyllis was saying, it wouldn't be, I would not want it to be pre-1979 buildings anymore, but we'd make it, we'd give them 15 years, so it would be, what do we get, 20, so 2005 and older buildings, or, you know, something like that, we sit down and figure it all out, but Costa Hawkins and Ellis Act would definitely have to go.
So I'd like to just echo what the other candidates have been saying, which is, we all hope that the Justice for Renters Act passes, and if it does, what I would do is just meet with stakeholders, and I would like to, as Phyllis was saying, capture more buildings other than those that were built before 1979. So that would include buildings in the 80s, 90s, and even the 2000s. And I think that this is fair to landlords and to owners. We know that they are making a fair return on their investment, even if we're going back 15 years. I also think that we need to have staff look at various levels of increases for vacancies. And I think that we need to take a look at corporate ownership for multiple units in the city, single-family homes and condominiums, which are not included under rent control. So capturing these units would be something that we would be able to do without Costa Hawkins.
Okay, so other than Costa Hawkins, the other big legislation that has been sort of teased already in the last answer is the Ellis Act of 1986. See, Ellis Raskin on the audience, I don't think it was named after him, but the Ellis Act. This has also greatly affected Santa Monica as a community. What reforms, if any, would you like to see made to the Ellis Act? And on this one, we will go with Kayden.
I think the language of the Ellis Act needs to be tightened, and the reason why is because of situations like what's going on with Barrington Plaza, where we're seeing landlords using, pointing to the Ellis Act in bad faith and saying that they're going to use this, the Ellis Act, and then they're using that to have mass evictions. And if they're able to do that, then that certainly means that this law needs to be reformed because it's not tight enough, because the Ellis Act is only for times when owners are going out of business and not to evict people just so they can make some sort of repair and then bring in more tenants at market rate rents. So the language needs to be tightened.
Okay, Phyllis.
I can't add much more to that because I agree with everything, I think you've hit all the points. Yeah, and also, there are some abuses going on, too, with, you know, frightening tenants and so on. So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Anyway, I agree with everything Kay said, and I think there need to be some reforms in the language and tighten the loopholes so that we're not going to see another situation like what we're seeing at Barrington Plaza.
I agree with both Kay and Phyllis. I would even take a step further, I think Ellis Act should disappear completely. You know, if you entered into the agreement as, I have a multifamily unit in the city, that's what you're doing, and I would just abolish the Ellis Act.
Okay, thank you. So the next question comes from one of our local landlords who is a member of our club, and I see some of them are on the call on Zoom right now. So would you be open to passing more expenses onto the tenants of Santa Monica for things like property taxes, earthquake retrofit costs, water, sewage, or trash bills? And why or why not? And we'll start with Michael.
I would pass on no additional cost. People are struggling, there's no landlord in this city who's struggling, but there's a lot of citizens and renters in the city who are struggling, so I would not pass on any costs.
Thanks, Phyllis.
Well, we do pass a couple things on, and we do pass, and we do share the registration fee with the owners. But it's my understanding the typical and customary costs have already been figured into the G A, and we're good where we are. And we are, I believe, the only rent control city in California that does, that did in the past decide on making a couple pass-throughs. So I don't mind doing that, I'm happy to do it, but I don't think that I would like to see anymore. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, I wouldn't like to see any other pass-throughs other than the registration fee, which is already passed on to the tenant. We know that landlords already make a fair return, we already know that rent is very We have case law that points to the fact that landlords make a fair return, because landlords have claimed that they're not making a fair return, they've taken it to the courts, and they've proven that they do. In terms of specifically earthquake, retrofitting, passing that on to the tenants, I specifically don't think that that is the burden of the tenant, I think that's the cost of doing business for the landlord, that's their building. And also, that was something that was supposed to be taken care of back, I think, in the 90s. So for the tenant to be subjected to bearing the cost of that, I don't think is fair.
Okay, thank you. And as a follow-up to that, thinking more broadly, is the policy of rent control a fair deal for landlords, starting with Kay?
Yes, the rent board is here for both tenants and landlords, that's what the body is here for. We are funded solely by tenants and landlords, not by the city, so we are a separate entity. Again, like I said before, landlords are making a fair return, so there's nothing unfair about rent control that's going on. And in our dealings, or the rent board's dealings, the rent board is an impartial body, and that is just administering the law as it is written.
Yes, I agree with that, and so is the agency, they're administering the law as it is written. You know, I think when there was vacancy control, there were some petitions that came through for increased rent increases from landlords. But since at least the last 10 years, there has not been one petition to the agency for a rent increase, meaning I'm not making enough money, I'm not making that fair, that just and fair return. Look, with these prices going sky-high, landlords have been making probably way over their just and fair, what would be considered just and fair, and I'm not labeling that as something, you know, that they're horrible people, that's the law, you know, and that's fine. So the just and fair part of it is a mathematical computation that was, that's in the law, and that's part of it, and we respect it, and they are entitled absolutely to a just and fair return. Thank you.
Hi. Is rent control fair to landlords? I mean, they knew they're getting into it, anyone buying a building in the last 40 years knew there was going to be, there was rent control here in the city of Santa Monica, it's like someone who moves in next to a school and complains that there's kids yelling, well, the school was here first, rent control's here. They're getting a guaranteed 3% return, our city guarantees them 3%, the city doesn't guarantee any 3% return on anything, they already have that, and if anyone is unhappy with that, at any time, they can sell their property and make a huge return on their initial investment. So I think the rent control, how it is for landlords here in the city, they have a great deal right now.
Okay, thank you. And so now, this will be the last question before the closing statement. How can the rent control board work to assist systematically disadvantaged groups in Santa Monica, starting with Phyllis?
Well, in 2024, we know there are still groups that are systematically discriminated against. One of the ways we can do that is through education, and the rent control agency has expanded the information into three languages, three major languages that are spoken here. And as Kay has referred to, she wants to see us go even further, it's Spanish, and it's Farsi, and it's, what's the name of the next one? Oh, okay. I don't even, I don't know how to pronounce it. Ameri, yeah, yeah, that one. And so that's very important, education is very important. And being able to speak to the people and find out what's going on so we can protect them. That, the discrimination laws have really tightened up a lot, especially that ordinance.
Michael, you're next.
The biggest thing to help alleviate people's difficulties is the POD program. I have a friend, a neighbor, he actually qualified for it two or three years ago, and let me tell you, it changed his life. He went from struggling to, after paying rent and food, he had nothing left over for anything, you know, he lost his dignity, really, is what happened. And since the last, I think it's two and a half years now he's been in the POD program, he's completely changed just his attitude. Like, he loves going to walk down the main street and going to Shoup's or a local restaurant and putting down his debit card and not having to worry about it. And before, you know, his neighbors would always kind of help him out, hey, can you wash my cat, can you walk my dog, and give him 20 bucks or whatever it was. And he doesn't, he still watches their cats, and he still walks their dogs, but he doesn't need that money anymore. And just a sense of pride is what the POD program is going to do. So I definitely want to expand that program because I've seen the magic of what it's done for people in the city.
I just thought, I think Phyllis's answer was really great, and it touched upon what I think both of our issues are, which is to expand the languages of the information that our city provides. So I don't think I'm going to say anymore about that, but I think I just wanted to say that the POD program is not under the jurisdiction of the rent control board, it's under the city council.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll have our closing statements, one minute each, and Kay, you're up first.
So thanks, everyone, again, for being here. I'm really excited to potentially be on the rent board. I think I will work really hard. I'm excited to learn more about the rent control law, and I'm excited to attend more meetings, to come here and present when I can about information that is upcoming. I've already said that my experience as a hotliner has prepared me for this position, and I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us to be here today, and I'm happy to see everyone here. It would be my honor, really. I love people, and I would love to represent, stand up for our renters, and work with our landlords, too. So I would, I sort of will reiterate what Kay said. Everything she said is said for me also, and I thank you so much, and I appreciate your consideration, and thank you again.
I really just want to serve, you know, I've been following politics and local politics for many years in San Antonio, Santa Monica, and I feel like now's my time, and I'm ready, you know, I spoke to my children, I'm like, you know, you can be embarrassed if your dad's running for rent control board and know that they weren't, that I'm not even on their radar. So with their blessing and my wife's blessing, I just want to help, you know, I mean, that's kind of how I've lived my life, I always think I'm getting better and better as a person and a human being. And, you know, people share their problems with me out in the community, and I try to help them the best I can, and I think in this role, I can help an even greater amount of people, and I just want to help, thank you.
Okay, thank you all so much, let's give them all a big round of applause. I really want to recognize, I mean, we have six other candidates in the other two fields tonight who have our experience, Santa Monica politicians who've done this before, and to see Kay and Phyllis and Michael as first-time candidates do this type of debate, I mean, that was really cool and really impactful. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the third and final field of the evening, our college board debate. And so let's, without further ado, please welcome up Board Chair Dr. Margaret Canones Perez, Board Member Rob Raider, and Rent Control Board Member Anastasia Foster. Okay, so we're going to start with an opening statement, one minute each, and the first up is Margaret.
That was random.
Random.org.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight.
Are you sure the microphone's right up to your lips?
Lips, okay. Thank you for coming tonight, I know we're the next group up, and I appreciate you saying, it's really good to see the Santa Monica people here, thank you, thank you, thank you. I think I'm going to do a little bit more self-disclosure than I've done on the questionnaires and all that. I've been a member of the club for 32 years, I've been a resident here for 50 years, I've been an elected official for 32 years, I was eight years on the school board and 24 years on the college. And I've always been an educator. I started as first grade from special ed all the way to high school, and from there I went on to get a bachelor's and a master's and a doctorate, and then went on to be a fellow at Harvard. So I've learned what it is to have to overcome and do something. I was also a faculty member for 32 years, that I'm very proud of, and I've had two children that went to all the schools in Santa Monica and Santa Monica College, and I am a Santa Monica College graduate. And so for me, the college carries a great deal in my heart and soul, and I'm very lucky to be an elected official for this city and for the college.
That's a tough act to follow. Hi, I'm Anastasia Foster.
Hi, I'm Anastasia Foster, a longtime club member, and happy and really proud to be twice endorsed for the Santa Monica Rent Control Board. Um, so by way of introduction to those of you who might not know me, I did want to say that education uh, is not only what's next for me, it's what came first for me. Uh, I'm a, a teacher by trade. Um, that was my degree program uh, in college where I uh, put myself through. Uh, my mother was a public school teacher, and I'm a product of public schools and public colleges and universities. Um, it, it's just, it's in our family's blood, and, and giving back is just so key, and the community colleges, I believe, is where that happens. Uh, I think the UCs and CSUs, uh, with any problems they might have, they're gonna take care of themselves. Community college i- is where uh, the rubber meets the road for education beyond high school. It is our workforce development, and most importantly for something like Santa Monica College, it is the transfer portal to dreams for many people who may be the first person in their family to ever go to college. And I believe that we give both Santa Monica and Malibu students and students from all over this region, this country, and the whole world, uh, that opportunity, and that's something I want to be a part of. I want to join these two fine people, uh, our president Catherine and the other four board members. Um, I'm very proud to have their endorsements, and I'm seeking yours. I'm asking for your vote after this, thank you.
Margaret's not the only one that's a tough act to follow, Anastasia. Um, it's a pleasure to be back here in front of this club. There's some new faces, there's old faces. Um, I too have been endorsed, I think as Margaret, we've been endorsed repeatedly by this club, and it's an honor, and it's something that I take very seriously. I've talked many times about the importance of education, and the reason I'm dressed like this today, as many of you might know, I don't dress like this normally, but I'm coming from my son's graduation, uh, from high school at Bridges Academy. And um, education has been very pivotal for my, pivotal for my family. I'm the first to go straight through to college, and I've talked about it a lot, because my mom had to leave Michigan State to have me. My father had to, uh, my father dropped out of Eastern Michigan in Ypsilanti. My mom ultimately went back and got a teaching degree from Florida International University, but they really im- impressed upon our family the importance of education, and it made the hugest of differences in my life. I'm an entertainment attorney, but I also teach at Pepperdine Law School, um, and I've taught entertainment law there for about nine years. Santa Monica College is a privilege. It's, it's something that changes people's lives, and that's our, part of our slogan is changing lives through excellence in education uh, in the global community. I couldn't be more happier about what we've done, but I'm also, you know, as a Democrat, as someone that, my mom was a precinct manager from McGovern, and I was wheeled around in precincts in Michigan at the time. Um, maybe we ran into Tom Peters. But I also worked on two national campaigns. I was in the field for uh, Dukakis, I was an assistant state director for Oregon. A victorious Dukakis campaign, I would note, that is one of the states that we won. And I also did advance work for Bill Clinton, uh, for President Clinton in nineteen ninety-six. So I, I take what Democrats stand for, and the fact that we're a big tent party, that we can have disagreements, but we also come together because we care about the people that we serve, and it, it's, it's all about service for, I know all three of these people. And Margaret, I've worked with for twenty years now, I know what she's about, and she has put the students first. Anastasia, what she was even doing for the other rent control candidates, I'm very impressed by. Sorry if I went over, I apologize.
So the, so it's all one-minute answers, except for this next one, which will be a two-minute answer. And Rob, I'll be relying on you with the microphone cord, it's gonna get caught.
I noticed that, I now, I, I'm now.
Okay, okay, so this is the same question we asked the school board candidates. Uh, I want to start with that same topic. Four years ago, when Margaret and Rob, you came here for the endorsement, it was on Zoom, because we couldn't meet in person. Uh, we were right in the middle of the COVID lockdown. How are the students of today different from the students of five years ago? And how has instruction changed? And what are the biggest issues the college still has to tackle? And the order is Rob, well, Rob will go first.
Thanks, that's a really interesting question. So um, I just heard nine graduation speeches at my son's graduation, and of course, they all mentioned COVID. I think a lot of our socialization and the social developmental issues that hit our students, you know, and again, people develop emotionally and mentally into their early twenties. So naturally, this affects our, many of, most of our students. And there's, I don't know if I would call it a tentativeness, I'm, I'm hesitant to label it, but I think that the naturalness of our normal socializing has been robbed from a lot of the students, that they didn't get that opportunity that they hoped for. The students that graduated college this year, they lost their high school graduation, and by the way, multiple students tonight talked about that they graduated middle school, and they had to do it from cars, and they got the degree handed to them driving. It was a tried-through graduation in high school, and that clearly had an effect on all of them. Um, they also talked a lot about, you know, that, the, the effect of even being able to learn. Now, interestingly, it's not all bad. Um, some students actually talked about choosing to then do more online education because of their experiences, and that's interesting. And, and in fact, that was one of the things that the club has asked about this time, about online, in-person, and it's not an either-or, the answer is yes. Whatever works, because people have different learning styles. Margaret's talked often about different learning styles, and I agree with her completely. Um, it's about having different learning styles for the student, different teaching styles for the teacher, and different materials that you're teaching, different subject matters that may be more or less conducive to different ways. And in some ways, this has opened our eyes to being more creative and being more open to those different ways of teaching, learning, and sharing material. I think I'm probably at two minutes, I'm not sure who I'm supposed to look at. Thank you, on time, thank you.
You know, I think the COVID crisis really put our college at a test, because there had never been any community college or educational system that had us shut down as fast as we did. And Santa Monica College, luckily for uh, the blessing of our superintendent president, Dr. Kathleen Jeffrey, in the rear, um, she shut us down like we needed to do. And there were faculty and there were students that did not know how to teach or learn online. We didn't even know how to get support services, meaning financial aid, meaning they were also suffering from food insecurity. They didn't know how to get tutors, they didn't know how to get their financial aid. So we had to learn how to revamp all of that, even the registration process. We had to revamp everything so that it was student-friendly, so that they wouldn't drop out, but they still dropped out. And that, the reason why they dropped out, because a lot of their parents lost their jobs. So su, and they lost their jobs. So they had to go to work to provide that extra money to pay rent, to pay mortgages, to feed themselves. So now what we're struggling with now as a college is, we have two populations of students, some that want to be online, and some that want to be on campus. And it's not necessarily just the learning style, it's what makes sense for them to make a living, because most community college students are commuter students, and they'll have to work in order to go to school. And so we've had to learn, how do we accommodate that? We now have a food pantry called the Volega, and in the Volega, students come every day to get food from us, get clothing, to get, if you, if you've been through Thanksgiving, they come through our, our drive-through lines when we give a complete Thanksgiving dinner. So we've had to learn to be a rapper on college socially for our students.
I appreciate listening to those answers very much, because as the non-incumbent at the table, um, my approach to answering your questions is gonna have to be a little different. I haven't had the opportunity yet to get to know a lot of the students at SMC. Um, but what I can talk about is what I hope to bring in the future, and what I think as a parent of, of a public school child who also experienced COVID, though, starting in kindergarten, COVID kindergarten and first grade was pretty awful. Um, but at the same time, um, one of the groups of students that SMC serves are students who have maybe gone to college and not succeeded at a four-year institution. Students that have gone into the workplace after high school or after dropping out of high school, and not fulfilling, you know, what they want for their lives. We can be a place where they can come back. So non-traditional students that are not necessarily your eighteen-year-old fresh high school graduate. So if COVID has affected people's careers, um, the track they thought they would take in life, or has, you know, uh, setbacks in, in their, in their plans, uh, SMC and the promise can bring folks back. And I think that both uh, through online education and in-person at our wonderful facilities, uh, which are getting better all the time thanks to the generosity of our communities, um, that we can be a beacon, you know, post-COVID, using technology as well.
Thank you. So now, uh, touching on some of what you guys just talked about, how will you address the rising mental health concerns among students? And what specific initiatives do you propose to improve access to mental health resources on campus? We'll start with Margaret.
Um, as a, as a college or as an institution, we started a mental health program. We already had one in our Student Health Center, but we ramped it up even more. We brought in, uh, we, getting it down to, we had vaccination, vaccinations being given, we had testing being done, we had more therapists hired, more psychologists and social workers from UCLA and USC to come in to see if students have anxiety or difficulty with just being afraid of be, coming back and being exposed to other people. Sometimes coming and feel like complete failures, and we had to be able to ramp up that sense of worth or lack of worth that they could do it, whether they were online or, or in, on campus. The hardest part for students, especially students of color, they couldn't get through online classes. They were not used to that modality of education, so they had a great deal of anxiety. So we had to be able to teach them academic success in their classes.
So I'm not gonna answer your question directly, I'm gonna answer it indirectly as a non-incumbent, uh, again. Um, my mother started a program at my public high school in Jefferson City, Missouri, uh, to prevent students from dropping out. It was a very large high school, similar to Samo High, it was twenty-four hundred students. Um, and uh, she was able to improve that graduation rate quite a bit. And, and the main way she did it was um, uh, through counseling. And it wasn't, uh, these students in particular did not have a diagnosis of learning disability or behavior disorder. They had really crappy, difficult lives and challenging lives. And so I think, um, I, I see a lot of that mirrored today with the things that, that Margaret and Rob have already spoken about. Um, in my conversations with Nancy and with Tom and with Shai and Barry, um, and with Don Gerard, with Sherry, all the people I've been speaking to about the college, um, we are concerned, uh, everyone's concerned with mental health and wellness, and so I, I know that, that this group is all focused on bringing that forward. I look forward to learning more about.
So we are in a continuing mental health crisis. Um, my children have certain diagnoses with, my, my have two special needs kids, and so they, they have forms of social anxiety and generalized anxiety. And so that often does one of the issues that they have to deal with. We have a very strong disabled student center, but my kids have tended to register with it, um, and there are specific programs. But I think we've also done a lot of training, it's often counselor-centered, but we've also tried to do a lot with our professors, our teachers, to be able to spot what's going on. I'm also hopeful, because I, I have not been tracking what Governor Newsom has been doing, but there is a lot of action now going on at the state in trying to help deal with mental health. And our students are, should be some of the beneficiaries of that, and there should be ways for us to tap into some of those resources to improve what we do. Um, we do a lot in terms of academic spotting, in terms of what, there's early warning when people, when a student isn't doing successfully at class. Um, and some of that might be due to certain sorts of issues. Oh, thank you, alright, I will not belabor it longer, but thank you, and there's more work to be done.
Okay, so you mentioned Governor Newsom. Uh, the governor's January budget proposes to provide a total of thirteen point six billion dollars for the California Community Colleges in twenty-four, twenty-five school year, an increase of five hundred and seventy-four million dollars, or four point four percent compared to last year. How do these budget numbers relate to SMC's financial standing? We'll start with Anastasia.
Thank you. Um, the last chancellor of the community colleges and the former governor before Newsom uh, dropped a bomb in the lap of the community college system in this state. Um, I've learned a lot about it, I don't think it was very fair to do something. It was called outcomes-based uh, funding, and while I think it's very, it's very well-intentioned, it has not been proven in any other setting, uh, it has not been successful where it has been tried. And instead, they just sort of dropped it and left. Because of that, we've had something called Hold Harmless going on six-plus years now, which basically just gives you what you had last year plus some sort of a COLA adjustment. I, I think it's unfair to have this lack of stability, and it's something I'd very much like to work on. I, I'd like to bring whatever legislative know-how I have or relationships I have to, to help work on that stabilizing uh, force that the, that the state government can be. It's not fair, uh, it's not fair to our administrators to try to do long-term planning. It's not fair to our faculty, uh, or our staff or our students to not have stability in the budget.
So the budget goes through non-stop reiterations and adjustments for, up until September. And typically, even with the four point four percent that's going to the system overall, you have to earn it by either having these student-based outcomes, which is what was given to all the community college system. In other words, you have to have more transfers, more, um, uh, more degrees, more certificates, um, more students of this type and more students of the, of, of that type, so that they fulfill all these different types of qualifications. And while each one of those is justifiable, it's not clear that you can always increase those every particular year to actually take advantage of that additional money, let alone the fact that when you're in quote-unquote "hold harmlessness," Anastasia mentions, uh, you generally don't get COLA, or you don't get the full COLA, or COLA is gonna be ceasing. So even though there might be increases, not all of that gets passed through to Santa Monica College. And during a period of time, whereas people in the school districts in the K through twelve system know, we're not growing in terms of that cohort and the number of students there are. So it's not the panacea that we were hoping.
Um, first of all, I want to make something very clear. Uh, Anastasia, for being a non-incumbent, had the most perfect answer about our budget. I don't think I could have described it any better, it was amazing. Um, I want to, both her and Rob explain that. I guess that what I want to say to, to you folks is that people assume that all students that come to Santa Monica College are very privileged, they're very rich, they all live like the Kardashians, and they don't. Our students come from Compton, Cudahy, Maywood, South Central, Santa Monica. They come, and they come with need. So when we think about these monies coming, yes, they're still contingent of whether or not these students can graduate, but the, but the government is always also infringed that if they don't do it in a certain amount of time, they're gonna take away their financial aid. They also won't let them repeat courses, and depending upon where the student is coming with us, they may not be prepared when they come to us.
Okay, uh, so talks are underway for SMC and UCLA to enter a partnership to finally have student housing on the Bundy campus property. What will be your priorities as you guide that process forward and make suggestions for its implementation? And we'll start with Margaret.
Okay, so um, I hope you're gonna understand my answer. Um, I'm not gonna acknowledge that it's UCLA, because we're, we're not there. We're in an exploratory arena where we are having our fourteen acres that are at the Bundy site with a four-year institution to see if we can do a partnership so that we could have approximately fifteen hundred so that we could have approximately 1,500 low-income, unhoused students there on that campus along with students from the four-year institution, whether they're undergrad or whether they're graduate students. The good thing about that is that it gives the student, I'm also a therapist, a mirror of success. So, if they are there with other students from four-year institutions, they get to see somebody that looks like them. And it helps with our retention. And it also helps with either graduation or transferability. That would be the awesome ability that we could have. The biggest issue for our students is housing and affording them.
Thank you. And yeah, I echo exactly what Margaret said. I think in addition to that, so not to repeat, I'd love to bring the experience I have on the rent board for over eight years in working with tenants of all kinds, you know, maybe as a resource, a possible resource when developing that housing, whoever our partner may end up being. And we hope we have a partner. I would very much like to see the units go to students in need. That's what we told the voters we were working on, and I think that's what we should do. If we are given extra resources from any source, we could also look at making sure that students who have families, students who have children, students who are caring for a loved one, who need more bedrooms or more space, maybe there's room, you know, for a family-sized unit or two in the mix of units. If the UCLA students are coming, or if students from other states or outside of our country are coming, you know, I would hope that that would play second fiddle to our own students who are of the greatest need.
So, as someone who has supported affordable housing my whole life, and whether it's through Community Corps or through other providers, we need to make a strong commitment to making sure that that housing serves a lot of our students with, especially the ones that are housing insecure, to give them opportunities. The concern is that, just as when we were originally exploring the housing, that they wanted us to have the, do a license agreement with third parties, and the third parties were going to issue bonds. It looked like everyone was going to be using this as a sort of boondoggle to make a lot of money. And it wasn't clear that it was going to produce real housing for our students. And that's where we were when that four-year institution ended up with us. And I was one of those that was particularly dissatisfied and said we needed to find other options and help to find people that were going to be helpful in actually building housing rather than exploring and using state money to constantly be paying contractors or consultants to make money out of not building housing. So, I think we're all in a lot of agreement on that one. And certainly Margaret and Anastasia made much smarter comments than I ever would.
Okay, so, two out of every three community college students in California are grappling with basic needs and securities, including food and housing. We just spoke about how the college is addressing housing needs. What is the college doing or should it be doing to support SMC students' access to food? Go to Rob first.
As usual, Margaret has stolen my thunder by talking about the bodega already. But we were leaders. And if there's, when we shut down the college or transformed the college during COVID, we made a real commitment to helping students with food insecurity. And we had regular food pantry opportunities for people to come and get farmer's market-type food at the college. We did have a number of Thanksgivings. The foundation came in there and found people to help support that. So, we have been continually trying to work on that. We've made sure that the vendors that are at Santa Monica College accept the county aid that is for food insecure families. We continue to try to find the resources. These are, the college is not truly funded on that. We are trying to do everything we can but maintain within the sort of scarce budgets we have while still providing the quality education that is our core mission. And I see that my time is up, and I'm going to try to guess who's going to go next. I'm going to go with Margaret this time.
Alright.
I have a 50/50 chance I blow it.
So is not to repeat what Rob so wonderfully and eloquently said about the bodega, which I've volunteered at, right when it opened. Got to be out there handing out bags of groceries, diapers, eggs, you name it. And my partner Andrew and I have been privileged to be able to give meals away at Thanksgiving the last couple of years. And that was, especially during COVID, it was a very special experience. I've been on the Meals on Wheels Board of Directors for a long time. And we have long partnered with SMC. We have had members of your faculty and staff on our board. We have looked to your nursing programs as resources for feeding both students at SMC and people in the community of all ages and of all abilities and homebound. And so, I just applaud the effort that the foundation has done. To your point, we should definitely be finding more stable funding sources to meet those needs for our students.
You.
I think that what our college has done, like our Student Health Center, we have really protected and honored reproductive rights for our students. Our students can go in there and get medical care. And if they have issues about reproductive rights, they can go in there and have their health needs met there. That's part of the basic needs. I'm very proud of what Santa Monica College has done. Students can go to a vending machine and they'll just get Oreos and Doritos. They can actually go there and get a meal, a sandwich, a salad. And I'm talking about healthy stuff, something within price range, not something that's $15 when you go out for a sandwich here in Santa Monica. We're talking about $5 or under $5. That's amazing. We also have students, our foundation director, she remembered when she was on public assistance, my family's on public assistance. She goes, you know, students need diapers. They need a formula. They need things like that. So, we make sure that they get what's really necessary in a household.
Okay. Some critics suggest that the unions put teachers, professors, faculty before the students' best interests. Can you describe the relationship between the college, the students, and the unions? Anastasia?
Oh, that's a big question. So, I have been, I've met with the Faculty Association, with the leadership there at the college. And I'm a 20-plus-year union member myself and have struggled at different points in my life as well to make ends meet, to feed my family. And so, I respect the rights of workers. I respect their right to organize. And faculty and staff are also trying to put food on the table in a very expensive state. We have at SMC some of the most generous pay and benefits that are possible to give, and they deserve it. The product that we deliver to the students is an education. The way we get it to them is through our faculty and our staff. At the Rent Board, we had ample opportunity over the years to work with bargaining units. There are three within the Rent Board staff. And so, during those budget negotiations, you know, I had the privilege of working for our staff, you know, to help them through our budget deals. So, I don't know what kind of rumors you're hearing, but I'm not hearing those. I think it's a nice balance. From everything I've gleaned so far, from the trustees and from the folks I've worked with at the union, they have a nice balance going at SMC. And I'm interested to get more involved with it and help all groups when I can.
First of all, I'm really sad to hear that that's a mindset for someone because it's the furthest from the truth. You wouldn't have students come with a metro, two metro buses and a Santa Monica bus to come to our college because they know the commitment they get from the faculty. You can't find a set of faculty or even support workers there that are more committed to the student than any other community college. I was a board of governor for all the community colleges in California. And Santa Monica College is number one in the state, and especially with the commitment from their faculty. And my bias, I'm a former faculty member. I know that. But I also know from my former college, from Alphamina College, they couldn't reach the level of commitment and excellence of education at Santa Monica College. They're not elitist like you see a lot of sometimes professors. They work with students at the level that they're at. They don't want to just take the high-achieving students. Somebody who goes, I want to have the calculus-level students. They want to take them all where they're at.
Margaret and Anastasia are completely right. I'm kind of shocked to hear that, what you're saying. First off, unions don't have to apologize for seeking good benefits and good wages for their employees. And I reject that entirely. But our faculty, so much of academic institutions are driven by faculty. And if you don't have a good faculty, you don't have a good academic institution. You have the best academic institution in your backyard of any community college district in the state. And that's because of our faculty. I'd like to think it's because of trustees, but it's because of the faculty. And so many of the innovations that we could talk about, you know, we're trying now to start our bachelor's degree program in cloud services. That was driven by the faculty. You know, Howard Stahl in the Computer Science Department. We can talk about, you know, when I occasionally get to hang out with some of the faculty members, some of the chairpersons, and their devotion to students is second to none. I mean, I challenge anyone to talk to Walter Meyer in the Art Department. And all he talks about is what he can do next for students. I was just about to give another kudo to Margaret, but I don't get to. Sorry, Margaret.
Okay, so this will be our last question before the closing statement. Across the country this spring, we've seen huge protests taking over college campuses focused on Israel's military response in Gaza to the October 7th attacks. Some of the protests have gone off well. Some of them have been disasters for the schools in question. And we've even seen some school presidents have to resign because of the way the school handled it. How would you approach the balance of free speech rights with the safety of those who feel targeted by those protests? And we'll start with Margaret.
We recently had that challenge. We, it was last week or the week before that, we had pro-Palestinian students there. And just very closely, 10 feet, we had celebration of the Jewish Heritage Month. So, they were right across from each other. And we did preparations as a college of how to keep them safe. And also, rather than having a lot of police officers there, we did have some. We had our faculty and our administrators out there so that they could support the students and they could talk to each other in a way that wasn't attacking and decimating each other. We tried to create a culture like that. We have a president who's constantly being pulled into, well, you got to speak for this, you got to speak that. She goes, no, I'm going to keep peace on the campus. And that's the mindset of the entire board. There's a few people in faculty and other ranks that said, no, you should be harder on this. No, we're about safety and peace on our campus.
So, it's been very sad to watch what's happening to, you know, America's known for its higher education system. And what's happened to our higher education system this year has been tragic. Instead of encouraging dialogue, instead of encouraging respect, instead of making sure that people were safe while also ensuring that people had the right to express their views, we've seen a lot of ad hoc or sort of emergency responses. I'll add on to some of the great details that Margaret already gave you, but we had not just a rally and a counter-rally. We also had an Israeli military alum, not from Santa Monica College, but from the Israeli Defense Forces that spoke on campus. We also had something that was more impromptu. So, we had multiple events over the course of two weeks. You didn't read about anything that happened at our campus because we over-prepared. We made sure that we were in communication with the people that were putting on the events, that they understood what they could do and what they couldn't do. It wasn't ad hoc sort of rules that were getting changed. It just happened at some institutions. And I'm being shown that my time is out. And because I too believe in respectful communication, I'm going to make sure I give up the mic.
Thank you, Rob. Not being part of the campus yet, I hope to be soon. I observed from afar, and I had a chance to speak with Dr. Nancy Greenstein that week. And she filled me in on exactly how the college handled it. And it's funny because I had already written my SMUR questionnaire answer and my Dem Club questionnaire answer before the actions at SMC took place. And I would say the same thing I said before. You know, that the best thing I can bring as a new, hopefully trustee, is good governance and everything I've learned over my lived experience and my education, my work on the Rent Board, and just working with our esteemed administrator and making sure that the college is protected from liability, from legal challenges whenever possible, and just always reinforcing best practices that we can find that reflect the values of Santa Monica and Malibu and of our college.
Nice timing, now. She's ready.
You're going to ask the next question?
No, I was just, I thought we were in our last game.
Yeah, yeah, so we're going to do closing statements, and we're going to start with Anastasia, one minute.
Thank you. I just want to spend my minute saying thank you. Thank you to the Democratic Club for always being such a robust place for all of these discussions. I can't wait to, you know, for the rest of the college community to take a look at what we've done here. I want to thank you for your support and for your patience. I want to thank especially Dr. Susan Ammanoff for really taking me under her wing, giving her encouragement and her endorsement. I want to thank Don Gerard for spending a lot of time with me, helping me learn more and more about this college every day. Dr. Katherine Jeffrey for having such a wonderful college for me to hopefully come to. I'd like to thank my boyfriend, Andrew, for helping babysit my eight-year-old son so that I can do this work, so that I can take all these hours and hours of meetings and learning about the college now and in the future. So, thank you to all of you for your time. Appreciate it.
First of all, I want to ask, humbly ask and respectfully ask for your support and for your individual votes. I've been very honored to be supported by this club. It's a big deal. I've been a Democrat my entire life, and I won't be changing. But I have to tell you two things. I'm real hopeful for the future of our college. It's going to be great. Hopefully, the voters will do the right things and elect all of us. It's going to be great having Anastasia there. She's very knowledgeable. I was like, wow, she really did her homework. And I'm also hopeful to the future of the college. When the trustees, if it changes again, I see potential new candidates come aboard and what they're going to bring. And I just want to ask you to keep believing in our college because we believe in our students and we believe in the people that work there. And I thank you for letting me be part of those dreams. It sounds corny, but they really are dreams and hopes for people who come to community colleges that don't think that they have it. And I'm blessed to be able to be part of that.
I'd like to just start by saying, in my humble opinion, I think you have a real dream. I'm running with a dream team right here. We have Anastasia, who is as qualified as anybody I've ever seen come to run for the first time as a college board member. We have Margaret, who has spent her career, her life, in the last 24 years on this board and has dedicated her life to helping students. And I'd like to think that I've contributed in my 20 years. This club has a special place for me. It's my local Democratic Club. I've interned for Democratic Congressmen. My brother was an elected Democrat in the state of Florida as a state senator. But I guess I'm going to go back to the graduation I went to with my children, my son today. And my son has taken about eight classes, I think now, from Santa Monica College. He's taken the entire guitar progression and performance. He's taken sociology one. He's taken the intro to political science for international. He's taken business classes. He's seen what the greater world is like, and I think I have five seconds. What I've tried to do for my kids with Santa Monica College is what I try to do for all of our students, which is give them the opportunity to have education, help them become the people that they're intended to be, which is what I think the job of any parent is.
Here, let's thank our candidates again. Anastasia, Rob, Margaret, thanks so much for being here. And so, folks, that's going to be a wrap for this meeting. Just remember, Thursday, very rare that the Dem Club will meet on a Thursday. A week from tomorrow, right here, we're going to have our city council candidates debate. A couple of them are actually here in the audience. Come back Thursday, June 6, 6:30 PM here. We're going to have our city council debate. Thanks so much. And again, June 6. Thanks so much. And again, June 26th for the endorsement meeting. If you like who you saw today, if you have an idea, come back and vote. Thank you so much. See you next time.
And thank you to all the people on Zoom who've stuck through this long. Good night.